It's more like, more like.
She's in. Because why I'm back from holiday, yes. Quite certain, no, I've got other things as well.
Yeah, I did, I didn't manage to get down to it. It's been the afternoon.
So that's all right. So I spent a lot of time with my brother. And it's down there, so we is. Right, that's not quite sure. Richard, are you, are you part of this meeting or are you?
Yes, I am.
Welcome everyone to the Finance and Governance Committee. Sure, I still on holiday, so consequently, I am making it up as I go along. And if I do fall asleep, because I've, some people go on holiday to relax and I go on holiday to sort of doing even more stuff than I usually do, then please wake me up. But are there any declarations of interest? Are there dispensations people want to?
Oh, good apologies first.
Oh, yes, apologies, yes.
So more negative apologies, so has Alison Davis. And the only one we're missing is Phil Pritchard, but I haven't heard anything from him. But he hasn't, he hasn't given his apologies, so it just happened.
So I presume we've also passed by the declarations of interest. Public participation. We, I suppose technically have a member of the public here, so I will read these items. So we have this point at which we can receive members of the public who wish to address the meeting in respect of any item of business included in the agenda. No resolutions may be made under this item. And it should relate only to matters of council policy or practice and not to the individual affairs of the questioner or any other named person. And just to note that we have all the questioner and it should be all the questioner. I keep mentioning this at every meeting, but it never gets changed.
Is there anybody online?
There is David online.
Okay, can't see anything on the screen.
Oh, we don't have a screen, that's right. Sorry about that.
He's asleep. No, it's just, it's just David.
And we, we can see him on the, on the screen here, so he has things to say.
Hey, everybody.
Right, the previous meeting on last month, you have the minutes. So looking through page one, page two, page three, and over onto page four. I'll be happy to accept these for so much progress that we do as faithful record. Thanks, Richard. Seconded, that's installed. Those in favour? Yes, you know, that's unanimous. That matters are writing from minutes and we have also, of course, the recommendations, a lot, actually a lot of the after minutes in record. And if you particularly want to say anything about the topic, et cetera.
Just to note, so WTCM 220, which is the policy updates one, that's an ongoing one. So that hasn't been completely finished.
Yeah.
And that's ongoing. That newsletter is on the agenda for you. Staffing review I'll mention later, so is the recruitment administrator, I'll mention later. And that is about it. Everything else is either done or on the agenda.
Yeah. So anything you want to mention as regards to matters of urgency?
Yeah, so we entered into the new telephone, new phone copy lease, that's going well. New telephone lease, we've got a new phone system. If you've noticed, if you bring your office now, you get lovely hold music and buttons to press to which way, where you want to go, which is very nice. And you all now have your own email addresses. Richard, you caused us a slight technical error because you set yours to forward on somewhere else. It wasn't allowed, so, but we've sorted it now, so we're all fine. So hopefully you're getting your emails correctly. They're correctly forwarded.
Yeah, I am getting them.
That's good, that's fine. They weren't originally, I was getting backs, backs when you were saying error. That's right, that's sort of it.
Today, when I tried to reply to everyone.
Yes.
The reply to councillors at Welshpool, whatever it is, can bounce back to me.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if that means everybody got it or not.
Could you forward me the app? It might be because you tried to reply from your palace email and you can only reply to councillors from your councillor email.
No, I was trying to reply from my personal email.
That'd be why.
Same thing, okay.
So it's restricted to internal.
So just not the amount of publicity that's said you've applied, paid some bills.
Richard, I can't hear you at all.
Hello?
You're not, no, louder than you just talking down. I can't hear you if you're talking down.
I suspect because you were looking in.
That's just, that's just there.
Yes, you need to be fairly direct to the mic.
Now, the rest of the Mr. Right, I'm bored.
That's fine. So moving on then to item five, financial matters. Council accounts for July and August, periods four and five, you have these.
Sorry, I missed you.
Welcome, Bill.
I'm sorry, I missed.
Hi, Bill. Firstly, we have the cash and bank totals. Sure, and if you want to particularly prefer to want this.
Know that just that you can see that we've now had our second instalment of the precept. And as you can see, we are below, we are above last year's graph, but below the last just that. But nothing behind that.
So looking on to appendix D. We have the detailed income expenditure bonus budget headings. Are there any particular things that people would like to raise from this? Anything you'd, yes, sorry.
I just wondered if things are looking a bit healthier now, money wise.
Well, definitely healthier than I believe it was last year. I wasn't here last year, so I can't comment, but yes, we have, well, as you can see from the from the cash and bank totals, we have more money than we did at the same point last year.
But we still got to be cautious.
That's right, I, I, my team is very frugal at the moment. We want to keep as much back as we possibly can.
What we, what we have is an amount in reserves which is far less than, than most councils would regard as adequate at loan.
Yes, and the council has passed a reserves policy that says that we will have it would be three and six months of general expenditure in reserve and our general expenditure probably each month is around 70,000. So 70 times three is a lot more than we don't have. But it's a, it's a, we're, we're in the right, we're going in the right direction.
Certainly, the time, the, the time for care is not over. So are there any items that people want to particularly ask about or comment about or anything you particularly want to mention? Yes, Bill?
The cost for the elections, very high. I mean, this is, this is presumably just because of the number of by-elections we had.
Yeah, so, so when council set the budget, as you can see, we budgeted 1,500 and we received two invoices for the by-election of where Dewey was elected and Bill, which of course equated to some 7,000 and the other, and so way in, way in excess of what the council budgeted.
Yeah.
So we'll have to, we will have to claw some money from general reserves to fill that gap.
I thought that figure, it is something from previous year or something.
Yes, so those two by, those two elections are from the previous year.
Yes, but I thought there was one even.
I can, I thought there was only the one, but I can, I can have a look if you want to.
Is that due to the cost of issuing poll cards?
Uh, yeah, they'll be going to it. And also, we, we've been, I don't know if we're tricking ourselves up here. We, we charge palace elections for the corn exchange. We then in turn charge it right back to them. And because it falls part of the bill that can be paid, so should we just not charge them? And then, and then otherwise we're just, it's just moving money around paper. And we're getting money in the, in corn exchange budget, but we're paying it out in elections. It's just seems bizarre to me. So maybe we, maybe we don't charge them in the future, I don't know, but yeah. At poll cards, definitely, at the cost of 90 pounds per 100 electors. This is, this is a substantial cost. And as you can see, actually, if you look at elections, so it's on first page four, take five is the, is the account code. You can see that we spent 67 pound in the current month. That's the money that we've spent on the reusable banners and posters to go on the lampposts to advertise the next one that we did instead of poll cards for, for Jackson's election. So just to, just to highlight that, that's what we actually spent on, on that. Thank you. The only other thing I would, I would draw to attention, Chair, is that if you may notice that HRC is looking particularly overspent on some of them. It requires a bit more digging to understand what the council budgeted for in terms of NICS and pay that were required to pay to HRC each month. And it may just be that when this council setting its budget, it didn't take into account the 1%, 2% increase in employers' national insurance that came in from the first of April. So that needs some investigation still. But in terms of income, looking at, Operation Eleven, they looked at this at their last meeting. But if you look at Town Hall, for example, we're exceeding our assembly rooms target of income, which is great, but we're down on the corn exchange. So it's, it's a bit swings and roundabouts, but look, we've locked in, this is the six month. So this is halfway through the this is only month five, so there's one month to go on this because we're, we're in the previous third month. But the month we're dealing in now is, is six months. So that will start to form some planning for the next financial year because we know what we're spending in a six month interval. But in terms of the other budgets, for example, even the recreation, a lot of it's saying and spent at the moment, but those things have been lined up, we're ready to go. Yeah, and fencing is an example, I received the invoice today. End of season works, the committee has recommended for council to end this month. They, they spend that money on a particular contractor. So, you know, whilst we're tempering our spending, we also are spending to the budget of which council agreed to.
It's fine. We need to formally accept these.
Uh, yeah, just, yes, just sort of.
Someone would like to propose that they accept these. That's sadly, I understand, Richard, just, sorry, Bill. It's like.
Taking into or comments from the last meeting, I, I cut the number of papers down, but if you want any more, please let me know. But I've just instead, I've just noted the balances on the agenda itself. So as you can see, our 30 day account where I transferred a large portion of the precept to petty cash is under the, under the target, which is great. And the hub account is currently overdrawn because we haven't transferred the hub money to it. It's still sitting in safe, but we did it this week. So that then, and the 4.25 is a service charge for the account. So that's just why it's coming to a release.
So just to ensure that we, that we complete this process, those in favour? That about fair for David?
Maybe. It's hard to find.
So that takes us on to payments of invoices, or September, which is a payments E. And we simply, these are simply first approved, if there are any.
Yes, I think you need to. I will explain why it's so long. And basically, this is a new system that we're trialling in terms of tracking what's been approved by council. And some invoices that we'd paid in previous months, I couldn't find where council had approved them. So I put them on this list to make sure that the process was completed. So that's why you've got things from boys and bodens from people, for example. You know, it was paid in April, but not necessarily approved in April. So it's, it's just a mop up. So next month's list will be considerably shorter, but I apologize, I think it's 129 items. I'm happy to answer any questions.
About 200, maybe 5,000 pounds.
Yes, but we're definitely not paying that. We, as you can see, we've already paid quite a lot of things.
Are, are there any items that are substantially different from?
No, in terms of, no, and so a lot of this stuff as well. So on the first page, for example, auto rama, vanorama, that's paid by direct debit.
Yeah.
British gas is paid by direct, so I guess there's lots of these things that are here also with direct debit. Boys and Bodens is the usual stuff. CDC is direct debit. Enrich is direct debit. Seven Trent, oh, we just had our first tranches of Seven Trent burns, which is always joyous.
We didn't just ask on seven trends, sorry. Were they water, were they metered bills?
Yes, and so, yes, they are metered. They're, they're six monthly, we're billed, billed half yearly. And so includes water charges of the previous part of the year plus the new charges. So it's like a split, so it's, it's an actual meter that they estimated when they think it was in the first of March, because fees change between March and April. And but, but the end, the end one is the actual and the start is the actual. So they're, they're actual metered. But the bill itself has two readings on it because of the.
The car parks looks very high.
Yeah, so in terms of car park, we think that is actually the toilets. The addresses for the toilet information centre are incredibly confusing. The energy bill that we pay for the TIC and the toilet is called toilets. We didn't, we, so previous questions have been asked here about why the toilet costs so high. But actually, I probably think it was the TIC costs that were making it high as opposed to the toilets. And then the office is down as the TIC and the, and the addresses. It's very confusing to me, but we've, we've been to the meters and worked them out. But yeah, in terms of the car park, that's higher than what we were budgeting. But I can go and have a look, go and speak to them. In terms of allotments, they are pretty much on standard. Changing rooms was much less than we thought it was going to be. Town Hall as well. So just things to find, thanks.
Yeah, presumably when we, when we complete the lease for the day set, we lose all the outgoing on, on that, the electricity because they're quite high. There was one thing that jumped out and it may be that we discussed it and I've forgotten about it, but the, the end of May, we got a parking penalty charge.
Yes.
600 and something pounds, was it?
No, 10, 15 pounds perhaps.
Was it?
Why? If you find, you're looking for Lex, Lex Auto. But it's already been agreed, so that's why it doesn't appear on your pay list. But it was for 10 pounds, it was a parking charge that said that we were in Edinburgh.
Yes, I remember.
And the council refuted it and we had a fact saying that, yes, it wasn't that bad. The number plate was slightly different on the A and B.
We got a credit card payment on the first of May of 600, well, paid on the 27th of May of 610 pounds.
Oh, right. So for the credit card, this is where the depth started confusing. So the, the descriptions of what is on that is the description of one of the items on that. So the whole cost for that month was 10.
Yeah.
10 pounds of that.
Okay.
But if you want the breakdown, I can get you the actual breakdown. Yeah, that's why it looks, like, it looks like we paid 1,500 for a laminator. Definitely not paid.
I, I thought 610 was high compared to 300, I need a breakdown.
Yes.
Yes. Also, just on, we, we are now free of the trial house, electricity, etc.
Yes, so we've had Total Energies when we are with our electricity. And we got some help from Green Energy Advice Bureau, who are our energy brokers. And we're really going to share our new, our new contracts for gas going forward for next year. And they managed to get Total Energies to finally agree that we did move from trial house in September 2023. When did we move?
Four.
Four. And basically they had to get Harry May to certify that we did actually move. So that's happened and we had received a credit back for 1,200 pounds back from.
Yes, Bill.
Chairman, can you explain to me the day center? There's one there on first line is 11th of April. And it's for 100. And then there's one after that, which is for the first of April, which for 11,66 pounds. You're not paying that for electric for the. Is that, are we?
Where are we? We are, we are.
British gas.
Oh, no, British gas.
Sorry, gas.
Yeah, so I would, I would expect the 150 to be the previous financial year. And then the 1,166 would be, would be the, the, if you look at the dates, it's to do with the fact that it changed years. I can find you the actual bill if you want to see it. I haven't got it to hand, but.
You know, you're something, I think you're something wrong there.
We do, we do use a lot of.
Can't easily, it's 1,600 again.
Well, that's right.
Now, a bit late on, you're what, the eighth of May, the next one is.
I am, I can have a look and see exactly what we're spending in the day center. Does the kitchens gas?
You mentioned on.
They're electric.
You put that on the British gas, it's electricity, is that right?
Yes, because British gas is the supplier.
Ah, right, okay.
And it, the, the kitchens are electric, the heating is gas.
I would like. Next reason is that one of you have battery up, it's Karen.
So that's 5,460, isn't it?
5,460 and 5,480.
I will find the invoices for you and give you explanations. And if you can see, if you can see on the screen, that's what we're paying to British Gas. So roughly, it's about 500 pounds a month in electric. If you see that there's forecasts there.
I think the, the figure that's.
Delighted, no.
And it's, it's a substantial amount, isn't it? 1,166 compared to a month later, 564.
Yeah, this is why it might be a mop up bill.
But there's also that, that strange 150 pounds from 29th of April.
Yes, that's, but basically what happens is when you type in the, when you give them the meter reading, we have to give them meter reading every month. If you give it slightly later, it'll create like an interim bill for the bit between the two. And it might be the bit between the two is the smaller amount. And the, the bigger amount is the bit, the actual bill. But we still, we still pay it as by direct.
I think if we, if, if, if we can investigate that and, and send some figures around that. And so therefore we need someone to propose that we, we accept these and and bring them some back to, back to Stella, seconded. And Richard, those in favour? And so.
Those will now go on chat for approval by full council.
Any against? And any against? Any abstentions? Right, so scrutiny of payments. The feedback, well, I went along right at the end of the month to scrutinize payments because of course I had Covid. And I still possibly had Covid at the time that I went to scrutinize the payments. So I went fully masked up. And it just, it, it just proved to me it's a useful thing to do, simply to to look through the list of items, select some items, make sure everything balances up. And it's slightly more than we actually need to do. It's a good practice, I think. And so we need really to select someone to do that during the next meeting.
Yeah, if you could, it'd be good if you could elect September, October and November so people know in advance what they're doing. Chair, was the exercise, was it satisfactory?
It was.
I think it's important that you say that publicly.
Yeah. It's, it's a useful thing because not only do you get to check one or two particular invoices and you can choose randomly, you can maybe, you know, feel there's an area that needs, that needs extra checking and, and should go for that. But also you get an insight into the whole process, which is very useful as well. So, yeah, so we need then to to appoint people to do this for the remainder of this year. So that's the next three months. And someone like to do this coming month. Yeah, a cup of tea as well, by the way.
If I can stretch your biscuits on. Right, very.
No, or Russian words.
Well, can I just say, can I excuse myself? Because I don't actually have a very good financial brain.
See, yeah.
So I, I, I might be wasted.
It's, it's not much needed, you know, it's really a matter of, you, 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 you look at something, an invoice is drawn out, you check that the thing is the same and, you know, you may have some questions about exactly what the.
There's, there's nothing I can.
Okay, well, if, if, if I have somebody to assist me to find what I'm looking for and to pull the rhythm and stuff out, yes, I'll do. If I don't find.
Therefore, following that.
It says here, it's something that was not affected.
On that basis, if I've got something looking over my shoulder, yes.
And it's, it's false reported that someone isn't a tax secretary.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it can be, it can be anyone, yeah.
So hang on, I'm doing October.
Yeah.
Any, anytime, just, just let me know when. But you can, you can turn it on the next if you'd like, a bit spot checked, it's fine.
So do we, I mean, are we doing this monthly as well as the, the signature months?
Yeah, so because our financial regulations require that someone wants a quarter who isn't a tax secretary does.
The bank.
Who isn't? Who isn't a tax secretary, verify the bank reconciliations. So that, so maybe Estella, you were non-secretary, maybe you could do the quarterly check in October. Because actually that's, that's a good, because that's the council September signed off, so that October would make sense.
Yes.
The, the, in September, so Estella can do the quarterly check.
Yeah.
Yeah, in October.
Chair?
Whenever you decide. Yeah, just, just before the meeting, so any time between the first October and the, whatever the date of this meeting is on.
That's David.
Thank you, Chair, yes, so I'm happy to do, uh, if, if the bank signatories are allowed to do the, the monthly, monthly checks, is it supposed to be quarterly ones? I'm happy to, happy to put me down for any time after October, but, uh, moving house in between, uh, this month and next month, um, I do need to jump out, I send my apologies for the rest of the meeting because I've got another meeting I need to, I need to be at and cannot get out of.
Okay, so I'll put you down for November, so that's, that's therefore, um.
And will you formally appoint them?
Yeah, so I'm happy to propose from the Chair that, um, uh, that these three people, that is to say, uh, fill in, um, Estelle, but Estelle to do the, uh, portal check as, uh, as part of that, and David will do the next three months. Um, so, uh, seconded by, uh, Richard, those in favor? Thank you.
Councillors?
And that takes us on to. Uh, appendix G, uh, we have a vehement request. Um, which, um, you can, it was some, let's have.
Two vitamins.
Do you can give us a bit more information on?
Yeah, of course, so, um, you feel the council can move money around into council, it's called a vehement, and is, now council is the only one that can approve a vehement, but, um, in May when we changed, um, the terms of reference, it was agreed that all vehement would come to the finance committee for comments before going on to full council with their comments. And so, as you can see, the first one is to create the budget line for a newsletter, which of course we don't have a budget for currently, so this is creating a new budget code. Um, I have to note though that it seems that that cock and pasting error has appeared in here because, um, special project does not have a hundred and, hundred thousand, one hundred and forty seven pounds.
No.
It only has ten thousand pounds.
Just rather surprised.
I wish it had a hundred, a hundred thousand in there, and so that should be ten thousand, so, um, the new right then will be eight thousand if, if a council agreed to the vehement. Um, this is just requires good effect of the council decision already for sent newsletter.
Yeah.
On twenty third of July, it's, it's.
Yeah, just wondering, we, we agreed to produce a newsletter, but, um, that isn't a cost for a full, a full year of newsletters, is it? How many newsletters do we plan to do between now and two?
That's two.
Okay.
I- if, if you agree to what is on the agenda later in terms of newsletters.
Right.
So there's a bit of, there's a bit of.
So it's, yeah, okay.
But, but. And then we really increased it in the.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, and the second part of the Chair is, um, our professional fees budget is overspent because of, if you remember, the confidential staffing payment that we've had to make.
Yeah.
Um, so this is basically a vehement from the, um, min salaries budget, which of course, um, has a massive, um, gap in it at the moment because of the lack of two staff, um, so to move, um, the money just to fill in the budget, so it's not overspent. And we will eventually do vehemence for all the ones that have been overspent, um, to make sure that you're fully in control of the budget and buying process.
Our council is happy to, uh, to take these two violent requests as a single item.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, Karen, what's this?
Yeah.
You, are you on H?
No, we're on appendix G.
G.
The, the two violent requests, there's, uh, there's two pages, uh.
G and H.
So, um, I'm sorry, yes, H is, uh, yes. Um, yeah, sorry, they've both got, um, separate, and it's, um.
We're on H.
We're on G and H.
And.
I'm asking whether you're happy to take the two together as a single item for, for those.
Well, no, you don't want to ask a question on, well, it doesn't matter, you're dealing together. On one of those papers, they want to ask a question on the, uh, the vehement request. Um, the second one, increase required to professional fees due to confidential staffing payment. What on earth is that about?
Well, I, I can't explain it in the public session, but if you remember, council agreed in May to settle a staffing dispute with a former staff member.
Sorry, you lost me.
And hopefully the other councillors in the room can remember that council did agree to do this.
We did, yeah, yeah.
If you want any more information, we'll have to move into private, into private.
No, it's council, then that should be it.
But happy to explain it in private sessions.
It's the way it's worded that.
It's because I can't, I can't write what's in there because it's a other document.
Yeah, okay.
Um, but I'll, I'd, you'd happy to explain.
It, it, it was something that we discussed at, uh, quite considerable length, I think, before making the decision, so it's, um. Um. So, um, well, so much for those that we, that we approved both those violent requests, thanks Phil, seconded by Richard. Uh, those in favor? Any abstentions? Yeah, one abstention. So, uh, takes us down to, uh, five point five funding sources to consider the source of funding for works to the Anton Bailey as follows. Uh, town hall, twenty three thousand, one hundred and ninety nine, sixty, Motten Bailey, sixteen thousand, five hundred and eighty one, twenty. Um, you know, to.
Yeah, so, so this was, this was on the, um, agenda by, uh, the Chair, uh, councillor Bailey, um, who used us to consider where we were actually paying for the works that we've already had done, um. So in terms of operationally wise town hall, I believe there was some talk about, um, that we have a unused pot of objective one monies from the Burgess Lands Trust, which would be eligible to spend on the town hall because of course, um, the whole function of the BLT is to, um, repair the town council's edifices, if I remember, is the correct term in the, in the legal document, uh, which of course the town hall would qualify for that funding. Um, I, I don't know off the top of my head how much is sitting in the objective one pot, but I understand the council hasn't drawn it down for some time. Uh, a few years now, looking at the Chair of the Burgess Lands Trust to correct me if I get anything wrong, but, um, there should be enough in that pot to cover the cost of the work that we did to, um, the town hall. Uh, it just requires us actually to formally say, we will apply for the funds for that, and then I can get on and apply, um, usually the objective one form, and then get the monies to, to fill that gap. The Motten Bailey, um, we spent, um, sixteen thousand, five hundred and ninety one, twenty on the fencing and containment works there. And however, that is not a town council, town council edifice. So, so we are unable to use objective one monies for that purpose. And so the, the alternative really for that one is to probably take it from reserve, and you will note though in your, um, in your papers, that you had in the budget, um, five thousand pounds against repairs and maintenance on Motten Bailey, and we have ended up spending thirteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty eight, which is the excluding that amount of the sixteen thousand. Um, so really the shortfall is only eight thousand, eight hundred and thirteen, eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty eight pounds. So that's what we're talking about in terms of topping up that budget, so where can we get some funding to fill eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty eight? Well, we know that externally that Cadoo are not looking at any new grants for things, and it's unlikely that they'll give us a grant for the work we've already done. So I think it is basically going to have to come from general reserve, um, but, uh, the Chair wanted it on the agenda so we could actually consider how we're going to pay for the works, because of course, I think she was conscious that we had the works done, we didn't know how we're going to pay for them, and in future we should work out how we're going to pay for them before we have them done, that makes sense.
Mr Mayor?
Yeah, are, are we up to date on where Cadoo now are? Because I, I, my understanding is that they were just, uh, recommencing with.
Yeah.
With grants.
This was back in July, so after the recommencement, um, and still nothing from them. Um, but they were going to keep us in the loop if there was anything new. I think they were, what they wanted from us was a grand plan for the Motten Bailey, we need to go with something and say, look, this is what we want to do with the site. Uh, this area's going to cost, what can you, can you help us with that? But like repairs and maintenance, of course, is not a capital expense.
I, I think the work that we've done, it's, it's essential work, it needed to be done, but it wouldn't really qualify for, uh, Cadoo, uh, funding.
Yeah, and, and, and the, the costs have gone up even more because we've had another recent incident of vandalism, so that's going to add, just add to it, isn't it? Fortunately.
Yeah, um, uh, in the last, um, few days, um, someone has dismantled some of the fencing and, um, kicked in the door to the clubhouse, um, which we have now screwed shut and re-padlocked all the fencing. The fencing is, fencing's great, but it's never going to keep the most determined people out, um, that will continue to secure the sites best as we can.
So, um, uh, I presume this goes to full council.
Yes.
For ratification, but we're happy to recommend full council firstly that, um, we, uh, look at the objective one Burgess Lands money to fund the, uh, town hall.
Now, Richard's got his.
Yeah. Well, in relation to the Motten Bailey, sorry, it was my comment. But I'm certainly happy to propose that we.
Thank you.
See Burgess Land funding for the town.
And seconded. Thanks, Estelle, those in favor? Those against abstentions?
I could have changed because I'm a contestant.
I was anticipating, anticipating that here. So looking at the second one then, um, it does look as if we're going to have to, um, get more or less nine thousand pounds of, um, reserve money, uh, on this, but, uh, was, was there what you wanted to make, Richard?
Well, it's just a, a, an observation that I noticed on the press that the, um, the Motten Bailey in Newtown is to be, ought to be substantially refurbished with, I think, a grant from Cadoo, and in my opinion, our Motten Bailey is substantially better than theirs. So, um, I would hope that we did pursue a grant in the future.
I, can I respond to you? I would agree that our Motten Bailey is much more superior than Newtown's Motten Bailey, um, also being probably one of the first castles in Wales, um, built in way before, uh, town castle was ever on the scene, that was the original, original castel in Waltham. Um, in terms of the money, um, Newtown had, um, thirteen thousand pounds from the brilliant basics fund, which is Marshall Government tourism money, which was applied through to Power Council, and Marshall Town Council had six thousand, but not to us directly. It went to cultivate and it was forming part of the food trail, so Marshall did benefit from that grant, but not, we were, we didn't have the ability to apply directly. Whereas if we probably would have seen it, probably would have applied directly for, for that, but, um, I did actually ask, um, some of the powers actually, um, yesterday, that they think Brilliant Basics was coming back again, and they weren't sure. Um, but if it does come back, then it's a great grant because it's tourism infrastructure. Um, and that's exactly what the Motten Bailey is, could be in future, is a tourist attraction and, and infrastructure, and that's a better grant for it.
But we need a great deal more clarity, uh, in terms of, um, of, of what we want to do there, I think, in order to apply for grants.
Yeah.
So that is something we're going to need to work on, I think, fairly quickly.
And it's in, it's in the strategic, the, in the proposed draft strategic plan, um, the actions about Motten Bailey, so we're definitely not taking our eyes off the ball on that one, um, yeah.
So with that in mind, um, uh, we're happy to recommend to full council that, um, that we use money from reserves for the work completed at the Motten Bailey.
So you have any option, do you?
Yes, um, first Phil, seconded by Estelle, those in favor? Any against? Any abstentions? Phil, what's standing? That takes sense of strategy and policy and the interim strategic plan, which, uh, we have at the appendix I. That's right.
Hi Graham. Sorry, some, some of you probably got the copy of the paper about four times if you, uh, get your papers for each committee meeting.
I can light thousands of them.
Yeah, I'm sure you can. So Chair, the, the first appendix, appendix I is the, is the draft plan, and then appendix J is the engagement.
In the sense. Can I, can I, just before we, we, we look at it, can I just say thank you to, to Richard and, and his staff, the brilliant work they've done on this, I think it's a, uh, a great document.
It's a good document, so there, I, I, there's a, there's a lot of sense in which perhaps we need to look at.
Yeah. So, so, so the, the function of this and only this, so this item is on, um, every committee for this, for this month, and, and basically the rationale for that is that to give the committees a chance to comment before it goes to full council for ratification at the end of next Wednesday. Um, so basically it's after your comments on your particular area of involvement, so in, in appendix I, for example, then, you can see there's an action plan starting on page nine, and it includes, um, the, the, the themes, the strategic aims around it, and then the actions underneath, and you can see that it has committees next to it. Then what you're really being asked this evening is that you look at the ones that say F and G and make a comment, and the ones in relation to F and G start on page seventeen. And you're pleased to know there's only, um, two pages of it, and we did this in operation development, we were summer time, because, um, they had got quite a lot of themes on their, their lists, but it's basically, uh, so to discuss the actions that are there, so the council has a, you know, every, every council's had the, and committees have the opportunity to comment exactly on the actions and the timescales and results involved.
So, uh, so one of these obviously is what we've already touched on, that is, uh, launching the printing newsletters.
Yes.
Uh, to every household, continuing that biannually.
Yeah, and I, I would, I believe means every, every other year, which isn't what I meant.
Biannually means last year. I think.
That's what we were after.
Biannually.
Biannually, right, that's fine. That's the one where it's after. And, uh, so a lot of these actions have came out of what people actually sent to us, um, so, um, when we go through the engagement board in a second, um, you'll see where a lot of this comes from, but, um, it's just that the council have been commenting on any particular things here that they think that we shouldn't be doing instead.
So, I mean, before it is, is important, isn't it? This is, this is us being a bit more open about our finances and, uh, what we spend money on. And perhaps we are at the moment as far as the general public concerned.
Yes. And for information, Chair, we have, um, published in the last few weeks or so, um, a new online database of every payment that we are making or due to make in this financial year, so I actually think we possibly could be the only council in Wales that publishes every payment. Um, in England, you're required to publish payments above five hundred pounds, um, also not in England, so we don't apply that, but, um, other councils have gone to two fifty, but I was of the view that what's the difference between zero and two fifty and the public, you know, they can ask for it anyway, it's public information. Um, but instead of we just publish it instead, um, and actually I would urge all councillors to, to go and have a look, see what's happening there, basically, it shows you the supplier, the date that the invoice came in, the date it was paid, the date it was approved by council, um, and what it was for, and and who the supplier was, and actually, actually filtered by supplier, actually building a picture for the public if they wanted to scrutinize our tendering and, and contract processes, uh, it's went well with a look. But again, this is another example of how we're trying to be transparent, a lot of, when you, when you read the engagement report, I'm sure you've all been some kind of bedtime reading for you, you'll see the fact that people think that we're not transparent.
Yeah.
Or there's a, there's a view that because we hold things in private session into, to avoid, to avoid publicizing personal information or avoid entering into negotiations publicly, you know, we only go into conference session for absolute, absolute reasons, but the public think that we do it on a regular basis and we need to break down those barriers and explain to the public that we don't do it for the fun of it, we do it because we actually have to.
Yeah. And we do do it on a regular basis insofar as pretty much every meeting we're bound to be discussing something in, in, in private session, but it's not.
Yeah, I, I don't think the narrative.
It's, it's the exception rather than the law.
Yeah, I don't have the narrative from the process help.
Yeah.
And.
Um, Phil?
Yeah, I, 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 on the place plan, I, I'm, I, I'm quite keen to, I know it takes time, but I'm quite keen to expedite it if we can do, and, and I know we've just done one con- consultation, but, but I think, um, some sort of community meeting to discuss what people actually, how they visualize the town developing might be.
Yeah.
Useful.
As, as I've said to you, that the only thing that holds it. As as I've said to you, the only thing that holds it up is the fact that powers are planning a replacement LDP. Yes, if we were to do a place plan on the current, and then the replacement comes in, you'd have to redo it.
Yeah.
So it's to do with, it's to do with timing and the the cycle. And while there is a current network power sitting here, you don't now know when the replacement LDP is going live.
When it will be completed by. I think I I think, and I wouldn't wanna be quoted in a certain way, this is it's two or three years.
Okay, well, if that might be the time.
But what I wonder is whether whether we could start work on the place plan before then, and then if they, and then.
I think we do too, uh, and I I think um, community involvement, um, uh, you know, there is a cost to running workshops, um, may not be a huge but we need to determine what that cost is and build that into the budget on a regular basis because it 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 ought to be the way, the way we operate.
And that that leads me on to CO five. Um, so it's about consider expanding the team to include dedicated resource to do with communication and community engagement. Because if we have that dedicated resource, um, yes, there is a cost, but actually it's not an external cost we're having to pay. Um, as you will see from the engagement report, there is a massive feeling in town that we do not do enough to communicate with people or communicate proactively with the public. Um, at the moment, we're we're sort of, I'm trying my best to push proactiveness as best we can, but we are still on the back foot in terms of um, the press come to our meetings, report what happens, and that's how people learn about their news. And we need to be telling them before they're hearing about it in the meetings, that go along with them, you know, the negatives that come with that. So, um, yeah, and it requires requires resource, so that's something that to to consider in the future. And that's what the staffing review is looking at at the moment.
Richard, about the.
Yeah, can I just ask about CO two? Um, build on existing platforms, continue with broadcasting meetings, but we have to do that anyway by law, don't we?
No, so, um, by law, we're required to, um, have the meeting in a hybrid fashion. What we do separately to that is we live stream meetings now onto YouTube, so there's a there is a recording that people can back and watch.
Okay.
So that's what we're doing additionally to what we're required to do by the law. So we're required to have the live Zoom or via whatever platform.
And I'm just wondering whether you could clarify, clarify the next bit, update new democracy platform. What does that mean?
Okay, so the council, when I started, I can show you on the screen, so this is the council's, um, this is the, this is the back end, but this is the front end of the council's democracy portal. So it's similar to Power's modern government system.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, you can see the committees, the government's governance, and you can see meetings and the membership of the committee. Click on Member, on New Chair. And we're now publishing real time attendance information based on the minutes that we're providing. The whole system works in sync, so the minute, we write the minutes in the system itself and record the attendances, we're saying updates this. Membership of of the committees, each member, outside bodies, election history, the correct training records, declarations of interest, and then their recorded voting history. For example, that's all the reported votes that our chair has been involved in, their vote was for. We also now publish every decision, a resolution that the council takes. So you can see these are all decisions the council took. So for example, there's post sixteen transformation taking before council. You can see that this decision taken on the twenty third of July, it's still in progress. Who proposed it, who seconded it, what the decision was and what the resolution was, and the documents that accompany that decision. Um, so for example, there's one with a paper vote, so the cycling changes motion. See, there's a paper, you click on it. Then we have the payment system, again, is what I talked about previously, so you can scroll down and see exactly who we're paying and what we're paying, to example.
You've convinced me.
There's no, I just, I just explained to you. And then we've got a map, which you can click on and see exactly which order you're in. And then we've got meetings, which is calendar, click on the meeting, you get the live stream, the agenda and the minutes and the payments. That's the democracy portal.
Fine, that's really good, in fact, it makes sense then.
Yeah.
So, uh, so turning over onto page eighteen, if you haven't already, um, we have four items there that are uh, more immediately, obviously, F and G insofar as they're to do with financial sustainability. Um, so we do need to make sure we look at those. Um. And I like FS four, I like the idea of, uh, of of having sort of three years in mind. Because, um, uh, that that does allow us to to plan ahead properly.
Yeah.
And to, um, and to identify, uh, monies in year one that might be needed actually in year two or year three.
Yeah. Um. And that's, so, uh, and that's the whole rationale for having a strategic plan in the first place is because the plan should drive the budget, which drives the work. At the moment, we're budgets driving the work, which is driving the plan, so we're reactive, but now we're gonna be proactive. So the items in the plan that are year two and three, they'll be costed into years two, two and three, which is the next, next year and the year after. Um, and, you know, it's it's common practice now for public authorities to produce three year budgets, so you can see exactly where inflationary rises are gonna happen over the next three years.
Any more comments on it on any of these? Graham?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, so.
It it's not really this. I had my ear unmerciful, well mercilessly bent a couple of weeks back by a woman who said that the low turnout of the last election that we've had that Jackson won, the low turnout, sixteen percent, I think it was sixteen, seventeen percent, um, was the force of town council. Because we didn't send out voting cards to every single member. And this is what they believe they should have voting cards, and we should pay for them and deliver them.
Yeah, I would point out this, I think the, uh, the the percentage vote was actually higher than my election. But, uh.
If it was sixteen, seventeen percent.
It was fifteen, yeah, sixteen point five.
I think it was about fourteen percent at mine, wasn't it? Yeah.
Because we should have sent out voting.
I mean, I say, when I, when I was elected, I think the vote, the the vote was a lower percentage and we had poll cards there. So I don't, I'm not really sure that poll cards are are the.
No, I'm ju- I'm just saying.
But I recognise that people are saying that, and it's been said to me too.
Telling me, the whole ward is up in arms, the whole ward. Honestly, I had to listen for about my three minutes. Because it was all.
So the 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 cost of poll cards is around, and it depends because each ward is 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 bigger. So a little ward unfortunately, it is fortunately for us, is actually the smallest ward. So, um, the fourteen hundred is the is the base cost, and everything else is a higher cost. And the alternative is that you, that we deliver leaflets ourselves. Because the cost, the cost involved in that, I believe, is of course it's printing the cards.
That's what I tried to explain.
And then it's it's powers posting them via mail to the electors. And in the in their houses, but if we were to drop them off, but of course then there is resourcing out of there. Because while the operations team are doing that, they're not doing something else. Or while I'm doing that, I'm not doing something else, so there's a knock on effect. So you can talk about it in terms of money, but then in in quantifiable resource is different. You know, when, at least when Broadmail do it at fourteen hundred pound, it's underdo as the tallest handle completely by powers. Last election, the council decided not to, and instead pursue other methods, which we tried to do as best as we could. But I I granted, you're never gonna reach everyone. Um, and even with leaflets, I don't think you reach everyone. And actually, what helped in that election, um, in terms of our spend, that we spent sixty seven pounds on on stuff that's reused, which is great. But actually, the candidates in that election did way more campaigning and leafleting than than we did. And actually, that helped to highlight the fact there was an election on. You know, the candidates helped themselves, and that's what they're supposed to do as candidates, is to go out and campaign, and that was great. Um, so you just, you just need to be mindful then, if we're gonna pay for poll cards, we need to build it into the budget.
Well, I think there's an important, uh, an important point made there, that I think when we decided not to have poll cards, and it was entirely a financial decision, but I think we did say that we would review that afterwards, and so that we, that does need to be done.
Yeah.
Phil?
Yeah, I I think when we had to vote, I I I was the lone, uh, voice calling the issue of polling cards despite the cost, which I think was going to be up to two thousand pounds. I think it encourages and promotes the democratic process. It 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 prevents fraud, not that I don't think we have a problem with that, but it, you know, uh, and it focuses people's minds on the fact that there is going to be an election. And I think if something drops through their letterbox, they're more likely to turn out and vote than not. But, um, yeah, we have to balance that against the cost, and the cost is fairly prohibitive. Um, especially when we have a number of by-elections in one year, um, as we have done. So, yeah, I don't know what the answer is, maybe to put something through people's doors. But yeah.
Phil?
I agree, I agree with full sentiment, but at the end of the day, central government give money to Polish County Council to run elections. So why the hell are we paying for any of it? The responsibility is on Polish County Council, not us. I know we ask them for a election in this area and this board and this other. The responsibility for running elections, providing elections, is the Polish County Council. Perhaps you could check that, Chair.
That's what I told the woman, that it wasn't us, it was ours.
Well, certainly can do that, um, but, um, yeah, uh, and we do need to review the whole.
It's it's like toilets, it's their responsibility. Ours, so the best thing to do is if somebody wants to go to the toilet, they can go to the water. But the responsibility for running elections, providing elections, that's why they've got an elections, a big office and everybody in there. And and it's, when you really look at it, you ask the question, whose responsibility is it? The responsibility is it? And I say it's Polish County Council.
That's what I'm telling them. Richard?
Yeah, uh, the county council have no legal responsibility or no no legal duty to produce polling cards for community council elections, that that's the position. Um, they do have to produce polling cards for other elections, but not for town and community council elections.
Chair, I I actually, I I would like to see that in writing from the county council, as well as here, can we get in touch with them? And let's have it in writing, let's know what we're, what we're doing.
Yes.
But I believe you miss it, but I know it's their responsibility. But, you know, if they make their own rules, you say, oh no, we delegate this to the town council, all of a sudden we were the bill. So.
Yeah, I can ask the question a little later, yeah. Um, so looking on to, um, appendix J, which is the, um, the the results of this, of the survey. Um, I'd love, I'd love more people to have, uh, responded, I have to say, but, um.
So is I will.
Um, but we are asking again and again through this, is this service, is this place, whatever uh, it is, uh, value for money? Uh, and so it's probably that more than anything else that we need to look at. Um, and where people, where a lot of people are saying, no, it's not value for money. Um, how would we respond? I mean, now looking at the TIC in particular, where a very substantial, almost fifty percent said it wasn't value for money. Although I'm also noting that, um, uh, that that a a large proportion of respondents said, keep it even, so. Um, but, um, you know, I think, I think there is, that that there is a work to be done there in terms of, um, promoting what the, what the TIC does and offers. Um, and, um, you know, that's that's something we need to, so far as I'm honest, do I think?
Yes, definitely. Um, and I think what what prompted so many to respond to that question was the fact that I love it, showed what the net cost of the TIC was. Um, which of course is substantial, um, and it's substantial because it's got, it's got a lot of staffing attached to it and and staff are inherently expensive. And I'm just trying to find the exact figure.
But also what the staff do doesn't spring in my head.
No, no, so 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 the annual cost for the council, as it, as it pre-set debt cost, is eighty seven thousand one hundred and twenty-two. And you can't quantify information.
No.
In in the budget, we quantify lots of things in terms of, you know, rail ticket sales, which we make a commission on. Um, Owen's coaches, Nash's press, we, you know, make make commissions on that, we act as agents, we sell a lot of efficient permits. The TIC sells a lot of them. No, we, but we don't, but we do sell quite a lot. And we, you know, we sell a range of of items, um, around the tourism routes. But again, we're conscious that we shouldn't be replacing a shop on the high street, that's the same thing, we're not meant to be a gift shop, we're meant to be a tourist. There's only so much you can do to subsidise what we provide. And I guess the the main thing people thought, it was, it was quite a lot to handle, TIC. And I was talking yesterday to the chief executive of Midwell's Tourism. And, um, I can confirm to you that we are the only remaining TIC in Powers.
Really?
And there isn't even a TIC in Cardiff. There is TIC in Aberystwyth, which is only open part-time. This is according to the chief executive, um, apparently TIC in Mountford is now, is now closed.
I think there's a TIC in Brecon.
Oh, yes, sorry, I do apologise. There is one in Brecon, but it's not actually in Brecon, it's like somewhere away.
And it's run by Ashwell Park.
There we are.
Yeah.
I will retract my retract my only TIC, we're the only TIC in North Powers, which, and, and Montgomeryshire. And, you know.
It's the only council sponsored, um, TIC in Powers, probably.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I mean, obviously there's TIC in those streets, so we have TICs close to Paris, but, um.
Yeah.
Phil?
Chair, I don't believe we should these days address ourselves as our address being the TIC building. I think we should have a boarding over there saying Welshful Town Council, including the tourist information centre. And because it is now the town council offices, basically, and principally. Right? Uh, and we're, we're doing it the other way around all of that. I looked at the address that we put out for us, if somebody rings in and says, give us your address, please. And it's, you know, it's the TIC building, it's the TIC, Welshful Town Council, care of the TIC. It doesn't seem right to me.
I'm I'm very sympathetic to that point of view, I think that's.
I think we've given all those sort of panels to the TIC, they're ours.
Yeah, and and do you know what, actually, the 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 situation is that the public now think that we spent a substantial sum of money on the tourist information centre.
Yeah.
We haven't spent a penny on tourist information centre, we've spent it on the toilets and subsequently the town council offices attached to the tourist information centre. But out there in the public, it's been communicated as the tourist information centre, which of course isn't wholly inaccurate. And if we were to ever move the TIC in the future, well, I would suspect we probably couldn't because there will be a public backlash because of how much the council has spent on the public toilets and the office transformation.
Well, council didn't agree to that, Chairman. We had a meeting, Graham Reeves was with me when we had a meeting about where to put the bus station with the county council. And it was agreed in that meeting that they were gonna put a toilet block in with a bus station. And they didn't do it after, and we ended up with it. Sorry, back to life, it's a pity Graham Reeves is here now, he could work on it.
But but then, when I mean asked people, do you think we should rename the tourist information centre to, uh, something else, like Marshall Information Centre? Because a lot of people, um, a lot of people said that they didn't feel like the TIC, if they lived in Marshall, they couldn't go to the TIC because they weren't tourists. So we put a question in saying, should we rename it to be the information centre or Marshall Information Centre? And actually, it was fifty fifty fifty.
Fifty.
That hasn't really given me a clear steer either way, uh, so probably we'll remain with the name Tourist Information Centre. But, yeah, it's for cancelled at the side at the end of the day, you know, the public have had their say, but of course you have the ultimates. But I would hope you're ears.
Well, Richard.
Yeah, on the tourist information centre, we we did actually debate a couple of years ago now renaming it. And I was in favour at that time of calling it the information centre. You say we haven't got a direction either way, but it would still be my view that just to call it Welshful Information Centre would combine the context of offices with public facing information.
The the only reason it's come up urgently is because the signs on the building need updating, and I need to know what's put on the sign. So that's the only reason why it's a newer name and unusual.
Well, Phil?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think the debate we had was to rename it from the tourist information centre to the visitors information centre, which to my mind is pretty much the same thing anyway. But I, I think we we have to be a bit wary because we we want, we want it to be prominent that it is, uh, an information centre, whether that's for tourists or anybody else, um, and not just the council offices. So it needs to maintain a visible presence as a information centre. Equally, um, we need to make sure that it's it's well publicised and. obvious to somebody going past it is also the town council offices. So some kind of rebranding, resigning maybe is needed, but.
I've had a quote to replace the signs, only a hundred and twenty pounds, so we're not talking big money, but I just need to know what to put on the sign. But no doubt we'll discuss it at full council next month.
I think rebranding is the word, Chair, but I think, I think the easy and best answer is to say Welshful Town Council and Information Centre. Simple as that. Because every time anybody mentions a Welshful Town Council, they'll be saying the information centre, always very fair. But if we start making it a big, long hypothetical sentence or this and the other, they won't take any notice of it. But, you know, I agree with the sentiment. It isn't just for tourists. It's information for everybody, you know, but even if you start talking about train times and all that sort of stuff. And it would be better Welshful Town Council and Information Service. It's our information service.
I think Welshful Town Council, you could even just put a small sentence, tourist information, and if you would, you know.
Or you could put Welshful Town Council and toilets if you wanted.
As you can see from the toilet section of the survey, we do considerably a lot more work on publicising where our toilets are. I was actually told in the survey that I got my information wrong and the toilets are still paid, that they're chargeable. Well, I think I'd like to know, I'm the most definitive source of that information and I can definitely assure you they're not chargeable. But that's what I mean, we're not communicating enough with the public. Telling them what's changed over the years. And I spoke to someone on the phone today and said, oh, the toilet's finished. Have you finished the work on them? Yes, I'm considering that a time ago. And we just, nobody seems to know that we've moved as well on Triangle House. We haven't actually formally updated our address on Royal Mail. The post, the post people just know that we've moved and delivered our Triangle House post. And I think the Paris Land Club get very frustrated with the fact that they receive where I host them.
We're still showing on several sources online, the address is still shown as Triangle House, I think on, what's the one, is it?
I've updated Google Maps now. I have done that. But it's still, it's not great.
So there is a work, a work in progress there, I think. And, yeah, I mean, you can walk along the main street there and not realise that there were toilets round the back of this building, so there's certainly a need for sign there.
Yeah, just one other, a little different topic. Question two, I think there is an error. I think question two should be, what is your age? Not, would you support more community involvement to the building?
Yes, that's clearly a copy and paste thing. I will resolve that.
It took me a long while puzzling over it.
I think I've gone rather blind to my own report because I've read it and wrote it several times, but thank you. I will amend it for the final. But, yeah, in terms of this committee's remit, the best thing to do is look at the value for money ones. A lot of people said that T I C wasn't value for money. But then, you know, we just said about information not being quantifiable, but then also you need to think about the demographic using the T I C. And should we be investing in a different way to do tourist information? Should we be investing in a digital approach as opposed to a physical presence? And that's probably something in the future to consider.
Physical presence is really important myself.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm not diminishing this at all. They are fantastic. I'm just telling you exactly what people were telling us in the report. Wheels and Wheels actually received one of the best value for money ratings across the, it's actually received one of the best, best popularity for the cross organization. Clearly, though, people do not know what it is. We need to do a lot more publicising about that. Events also received considerable responses. And, and we have a lot of responses to council administration. Some people thought we had two hundred and fifty thousand pounds worth of staffing administration, if only. That's what, that's where the action about publish the infographics and the chart has come from. We actually need to show people that thirty five thousand of that is insurance costs. And one thousand five hundred is audit fees and all the things that are required to do by law. So it's about how we bridge those budgets down.
Of course, you do know that however much we publicise things, however visible we make ourselves, you're still going to have a fair percentage of people saying, we don't know anything about the council. I mean, now I do what I do.
You can take a glass of water, you can't make a drink.
Another typo, I think. Modern Bailey, question sixteen. Two options, Wilson. The purple one should be just to comply with their obligations.
Thank you, Richard. Not July.
Well, I think we need to move on from that. I think I'm going to finish entirely in a drink. So that takes on to item six two, which is debt management policy. And we have Appendix K, those three pages. This is quite important. We've had a number of situations recently where people have defaulted on important amounts. And we have agreed as a council anyway that we will be much more aggressive in terms of following these things up. But the debt management policy just puts this in a normalised form. So are there other things you particularly want to point us towards?
Yes, I would put you towards the stepped process on page two. So this is the, this is a staging process that we're proposing to follow. So.
This is item six.
Yes, yes, item six in the policy. So after thirty days of unpaid, within ten days, we will send the reminder letter along. Very similar lines to the reminder letters I get from county council. When we've not paid an invoice, so I've literally copied their wording, which is fantastic. So we'll be sending a letter to those. And then after sixty days, we will then move to a final demand letter. And we potentially could then suspend their use of facilities. So in terms of market traders, we could suspend their use of their store, et cetera, et cetera. And then escalation to yourselves to recommend either to write off the debts, spend access or to instruct me to pursue further action. Our financial regulations actually require us that if a debt remains unpaid for twelve months or more, then it may be written off if all recovery attempts are exhausted and debts over a thousand pounds require instant resolution of full council to do this. So the policy just puts into force exactly what I will follow with. So we'll ask the committee to review the debt that's outstanding and look at the evidence to reclaiming the resource and say that to obtain the debt, for example, so ten pound debt, we're going to spend three hundred pounds obtaining it. Is that the right resource, so they're going to obtain it? And any illness of the debtor or death, period of debt accrued over, and any other criteria discretion of the committee? And then includes their reference to the further action, such as more clerks for C C James, et cetera, et cetera. But basically, I think it just formalises exactly what we in practice would like to do. And in some cases have done, but this gives us a policy that we can actually probably robustly draw the attention of our debtors, because you'll see on the generator, we've got debtors on the gender item later. You'll see that there is still a substantial number. So if we've got this policy, it helps us to try and level that, level that back.
Yeah, I suppose we need a cost benefit analysis on debt recovery. I, I think these step processes sound, it seems okay. I, I've probably got a comment that I would make, but I probably don't want to make it in public session, so I'll leave it till later when we're discussing, discussing debt specifically.
So are we happy to, sorry, Phil?
I seriously feel that we shouldn't have anything in there about writing off debts. If somebody owes us money, let's get out and get it. Not just if it's over twelve months old, but you can write it off and all this.
Yeah, but if it's a debt of ten pounds, then it would cost us three hundred pounds to.
Yeah, but the next, the next trader or the next one who does it changes their mic and we've taken the last one on. Once they get to know that you go twelve months and you've written it off, that's what they're paying us. I mean, this guy that's just left the cafe, how long have you been there? And he's all the time, and then he never pays a penny.
Do you want to wait until the private session? Do you want to wait until the private session to discuss that particular case?
I think. I think, I think that I would argue against not having something in about writing off debts. But, I mean, I think it is important to say that this is it's an exceptional thing to write off the debt.
It's not just the amount of the debt, it's the reasonable prospects of making recovery versus the cost of and some quite substantial debts. Which we wouldn't want to write off under normal circumstances. If there's no earthly hope of recovering any money, then you know, you're just throwing good money after bad sometimes, aren't you?
We would not use this. The stage process is that we'd go through, there'll be five stages before we get to that point to write it out.
Well, yeah, but if we, if pursue every avenue, you send it writing it off, and that means he's got away with it. And some, one of his mates in the council tells him he's got away with it, he's all right. But if we leave it there as a debt then, rather than write it off, it's still a live debt to us. It doesn't matter if it's ten years.
I know, but you get to the point where the balance sheet has got ten year old debt on it and it's, it's just messy. We're continually carrying over forty, fifty thousand of debt each financial year to the next. As in, you know, I'm not talking about that's cruel in any time, actually. It's the culmination of rollover each year. There's debts on the system from twenty twenty two that need chasing up, but we need to have the resource to chase it up adequately, don't we? Actually, some of those debts, I think, are actually bad debts. As in, the system says they owe us money, but actually in practice, they don't, as in it's bad accounting.
Unless they are actually bad debts, if they're just down as debtors, it distorts the financial picture because they're looked at as, as assets.
Yeah. It's a contingency over to us. It's not a liability, it's an asset.
So are we in the process of reviewing those to see? If we can ascertain what is.
The difficulty is we're having to work with the people. Because the financial information we have just isn't available to work out where the money went to that should have been applied to that account or et cetera. And we're talking about back statements going back a few years. And so we're working with those people. And I'll talk more about it when we get to the debt section in the past session.
I do take seriously what you're saying there, Phil, about writing off debts. And I would not like to see us writing off debts as a matter of course. Or simply because they've, they've got, you know, they've got to a certain age. But I'm also, you know, aware of what Phil is saying, that, you know, if you have no reasonable chance of, of recovery, then you can't just have them sort of sitting there in the system rather. With that in mind, and especially looking at item six there, the debt recovery procedure and so forth. Are we happy to recommend this policy to full council?
Time for talking.
Thanks, Richard.
Yeah, I think the step process is a reasonable, yeah.
That's, um, those in favour? Any against? I'm presuming that you're happy that we have a debt management policy, but that the issue of writing off debts is the.
Yeah, it's just that, it's just that one, yeah. I mean, it's our money and we're giving, we're letting somebody get away with it. And that's a principle that tends to deal with it.
The step process, though, provides for, we don't write anything off unless it's first approved by council. So it would have to be discussed. It just gives us the power to do, the power to do it.
We're really going to be talking about one to two thousand Christmas at the Moorfield real estate. Everybody's got a car, we love that and sell it. Sorry, that's my route.
But it's getting the car, means you have to pay four hundred pounds to get a C C G, to get the car.
You think of circumstances where somebody has died, somebody has gone bankrupt, somebody has moved away and we don't know where they are. Just let me finish. They become untraceable. And I think those are the kind of circumstances that it can only be done by a full resolution of council.
You know what I'm saying, but I do feel at the end of the day, so it comes to whatever council decides as an end, well, it does it. I'll go with it.
Well, yes, yes.
It didn't stop me making my expressions, my feelings.
Now, that's important. I mean, that's what, that's what debates requires.
It's refreshing that statement, Chairman. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I was going to say, if we look at a figure and anything, say, somebody owes us fifty pounds, do we write that off?
That's, that's the level that I'm thinking of. There's no point in chasing. After we've done the step process and spent considerable time chasing it and we're getting nowhere, is fifty pounds worth spending for what about to get? Then, oh, is that, I'm not talking about, not talking about digging out. And then gone through the step process first.
Yeah, the starting figure is usually the, the limit of the small claims court because you can't recover costs in the small claims jurisdiction. So you're looking at debts where we have a, a chance of recovering money, but we can also recover some of our costs, including if we have to enforce the judgment. Anything, but anything below that, and then you're on diminishing returns because it's costing you money that you're not going to get back.
Anyway, we, we've, we've sent this forward to all council, but I think we note in the minutes the particular comments made. So that takes on to item seven point one, the newsletter for you to update us on.
Thank you. So at the last meeting, you discussed newsletters and it wasn't entirely clear what you decided. I think the resolution says that before delivery and distribution, they come back to you again. So that's why it's come back to you again. The original, I think the original issue came about how we're going to deliver the newsletter. Didn't that seem to be the crux issue? I don't think there was an issue with creating a newsletter, doing it every six months. It was how we're going to deliver it. So the quotes for the actual newsletters haven't changed. Still three thousand copies of A five, eight pages, full gloss, coloured and stapled. Is W B G four hundred and fifty nine pounds, Barstool silent print four hundred and sixty two twenty, Hello Print two hundred and seventy nine. But the, the two options that I gave you last meeting was do we ask Royal Mail to distribute it for us, which I know we've done in the past? And that would cost two hundred pounds, deliver to all the properties of the S Y twenty one seven postcard area. That's around two thousand nine hundred properties covering the three wards of Marshall. But again, it does include some stray properties that may be in other wards that will get picked up. That's fine. And the other alternative really was around council distribution. So do we deliver the the councillors or volunteers deliver the newsletters in local areas? But then, of course, there's no cost to us, but then it does depend on the resource availability. And so I went away and found another quote company who would like post it to people. And not surprisingly, it was two thousand six hundred and twenty four pounds eighty seven plus VAT to logo the addresses and sent two thousand five hundred leaflets to those addresses. So direct mail, not using Royal Mail, would cost nearly two thousand four hundred pounds more than using Royal Mail would. But that's just some aspect to give you of delivery.
Yeah. That is exactly right. That was, that was the crux of what we were discussing, wasn't it? I always think that we, we have to value our own time as well as councillors, as I was always telling people when I was in private practice. Nothing's actually without cost because even if you've got no direct expense, you're using your own time, which you could be spending doing something perhaps more productive. I, I think if we're looking at around two hundred quid every quarter or whatever we're going to do half yearly, I, I actually think it's money well spent. It'll get, you know, two, two thousand odd houses. So you split the cost down, what is that, ten, ten peer house, is it? Something like that. I, I, I think that is a better option than us trailing out, putting things through letterboxes, which is going to be time consuming. And actually, especially with the agents of our councillors, it's not maybe the sort of thing they want to be doing.
I think the 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 issue in wondoration is that, uh, some councillors had said, um, previously. Post office didn't give a good service and they didn't go where they should and they went where they shouldn't, but on the other side, of course. If you are using any sort of voluntary distribution, um, you you know, some people could could be getting them. You know, two or three weeks before someone else.
Yeah.
Or, of course, about two or three weeks after someone else, uh, or not at all, depending on when people get around to it, so. That's a good point.
And and if it's not working, we can just say, no, we'll we'll try something else, but I think it's worth a shock.
Well, worth, worth doing a year and then and then and then assessing how well it's worked, perhaps, yeah.
Yeah, but my experience of raw mail delivering unaddressed mail is very poor. Um, I remember when we did, when the town council did a newsletter some time ago. Um, I didn't get one, and I live in the town, and somebody who lives in Slangun, which is five miles away, did get one. Um, and I've had similar experiences through through other sources. But Royal Mail are very unaccountable for where they deliver unaddressed mail. Uh, it is cheap. But it's not an eye ball.
If the alternative is ten times more expensive.
I know, the the alternative is too expensive, I accept.
Do you know what's frustrating, actually? It's actually sixty pounds to deliver to the Marshall addresses, the the two thousand nine hundred properties. But there's a, there's a minimum cap of two hundred pounds, so we have, we have to pay two hundred pounds, even though it actually costs sixty.
In that case, it would be worth us printing more and accepting that they'll go over a wider. And 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 maybe that would be no bad thing in a sense.
But in terms of, in terms of like, performance and reliability, look, we would be signing a contract with them, and they're trying, they shouldn't be providing a service for the money we're paying. We need, do we need to enforce those conditions, you know, we're paying for a service, we shouldn't be getting a result we're paying.
In my experience, when you actually try and challenge them on it, you get nowhere. But try it.
Yeah, yeah, it's frustrating that that's, yeah.
They're all under themselves. And that's six weeks challenging B T, I don't want to say it on Royal Mail as well.
If you're a system, you could use, if you like, an email system. And just stick it on email out of the office to all your club, if you like.
Yeah.
Uh, but you're going to gather those addresses first, the email addresses first, I appreciate that.
I I think we'd probably do both, but the the point of the paper last time was about how we do physical communication, because we were hearing from people that. They might not be online and they wanted something in their hand. And they get so many emails that they would ignore whatever we sent, so I think the idea was to do both, because the the actual report last time says. Um, method of communication, but recent discussions and feedback suggest that there's a desire to revive the quarterly newsletter, the complement of the council digital communication channels. And ensure inclusive access to information, particularly for residents who may not engage on our website or social media, so it's about getting to the. People who don't give us their email addresses, but we will certainly do a digital. Same, the same P D F we send to the printer, so there's no, there's no extra there, at this point, it's about how we get it to in physical hands.
Hmm, but I I I'm very happy to propose from the chair that we, uh, we go ahead with using. Royal Mail on a trial basis and we we review how that it works so that we, uh, we we respond quickly. If if it's not as good as it ought, as it should be.
So do we review after six months?
I think we do, yes, review, well, well, if we, if we reckon to use some pre-year, but we reviewed each six months.
Well, well, the 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 idea would be that the next newsletter would be going out nearly immediately, beginning, middle of October.
Yeah.
And the next one then would be like March eighth, so a review after the October one perhaps before we get to the next year's.
Yeah.
Happy to.
And then a further review.
To review, then absolutely, before we start the October one, I think the idea was six months was, it was like start of the season and end of the season. But the newsletter we're producing now is to tell people about all the stuff we're doing in the next six months and stuff we've done previously. And of course, the next one, April, then is going to give everyone the dates for the carnival and things like that, and then what we've done over winter, so.
So I'm happy to propose that, yeah, uh, those in favour? Uh, any opposeds and any abstentions? That's all. Um, so appendix L is to note the budget setting timetable for twenty twenty six, twenty seven. This is simply for us to see it and note it. Um, anything you particularly want to say about it, just say it forward to me.
I just, I can't believe we're already into having the plan next to that budget, um, and it's crazy, but, um, we we've got my my turnaround at the end, um, you'll note. Council's actually setting its final budget on the twenty eighth of January, and we were required to submit our preset request by the thirtieth, so. We'll have to on the twenty ninth, but, um, as long as it's with powers all the end of January, there's no issues.
So this, this committee begins that process on fifteenth October.
Yes, um, the the committees, the other committees will review their draft one budgets, very high level. And then you, as this committee, will review all, all, all the draft ones on the fifteenth.
Yeah.
Um, but the difficulty is, of course, um, events and planning agenda goes out. The day, uh, please, the Thursday or Friday after full council, so it's, I'm starting to write. That one now in in anticipation for the, I think it's three days before day six.
The thanks, um, date of next meeting, um.
Yeah, I, yes, I.
The next meeting we held on.
Yes, I apologize, it was a, I'm so sorry, it was a placeholder, it should read the fifteenth of October, that's six, that's six, that's X X X X.
So, that's right, as in. Um.
And as an order, yeah.
Um, right, um, I'm happy to, um, again. Uh, from the chair to propose that, um, we move into private session, uh, in order to, um. Uh. Come up some confidential business, which sounds to me is ten. Okay, those in favour?